If you will, please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. I would ask the following students from Wittenberg Elementary School to come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Bryson Deal and Paxton Dyson. Bryson is the son of Kristen and Bryant Deal and is in kindergarten at Wittenberg Elementary. And Paxton is the daughter of Melissa and Rodney Dyson and is in the first grade. If we will stand. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, guys.
Great job.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Thank you so much, guys, and mothers, thank you so much for bringing it up. Board members, you've had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agendas presented?
No, to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Any no's, and that carries. We'll move on to our honors and recognitions, and I'll ask Dr. Jennifer Hefner to do that.
Thank you Chairman Bowman, board members. Chairman Bowman, will you help me with the first presentation? I say this every month, I sound like a broken record, but this is my favorite part of the board meeting each month, and that is to recognize and honor students and staff. We are going to start tonight's honors and recognitions portion of the meeting by recognizing two of our school board members for their service to the school system. Both Sally Hardus and Marty Pennell have served the students and staff of Alexander County Schools for the past four years. Board members and many staff members are keenly aware that school board members often do a lot more than attend monthly school board meetings. They also make school visits, serve on a variety of committees, attend student functions, and participate in conferences to learn more about school system management across North Carolina. Tonight, we recognize two board members that will be leaving their roles with the school board, and I would ask that Board Member Hardus and Board Member Pennell, please come forward.
And I want to just take a brief moment to thank both of these guys. The hard work, the worries, the time you spend. Nobody really knows that till you've been in there. And just thank you for what you do for kids. Both y'all have heart for children. We know it as board, we see that every month, and we just appreciate everything y'all have done so much.
Please give them a round of applause.
You know you gotta get a paper. Come on, you know how it works.
Last time.
I'll say a quick word. Because I know she's gonna be a lot longer waiting than I am. It's absolutely, yeah. It's been my total pleasure in being a part of our school system. It's really eye-opening. Because you take from, when I went through the school system, our kids went through. Of course, our youngest is currently going through. So you always want to see something left better than you found it. If you have, you know, any gumption about you. But it's, it's opening in the fact that there's a lot of things that go on in the school system that the public does not see or is aware of. And serving on the board, you get full exposure to that. Especially being in the schools and talking with families and getting phone calls and this and that. It's very eye-opening, it's heartbreaking in some circumstances, but it's also very rewarding. But I consider it a pleasure and just try to be a servant to the community.
First of all, I want to tell these guys what a pleasure it has been to serve with you guys. As Marty said, the public really doesn't know what these guys do, but when you sit on the board with them, you realize just how hard they work. And these people have the interest and the love of our children that it takes to be on the school board. And I know people don't always agree with the decisions we make, and that's okay. But those decisions are made with love of the children and with the community at large in mind. So I'd like for all the people to realize that, that these people are wonderful people. And it's been my pleasure to serve, been my pleasure to serve with central office staff. I didn't know most of them before I got on the board. And the principals, we have the best principals that any school system could ever have. We have the best teachers, the best staff. And my biggest pleasure as a board member was going into the schools and seeing all the wonderful things that our teachers and students do. It's just been a pleasure. Thank you.
I'm going to ask Board Member Pennell and Board Member Hardus to come back and help me with one more round of presentation.
I'm gonna take your jacket off.
Okay, Dr. Curry, you might have your...
She can give it to Karen.
Can you wear Sally's guy?
Sally's hot now, too. We were gonna tell Dr. Curry she could bump it down two degrees. Tonight, we're really pleased to recognize eight of our schools for achieving or exceeding expected academic growth during the 2017-2018 school year. We have representatives from each of the schools that will receive this recognition. We will begin with schools that exceeded academic growth expectations. I would ask Alexander Early College and any staff with the Early College to come forward. Sugarloaf Elementary School and any staff members with Sugarloaf. And West Alexander Middle School and any staff here with West Alexander.
One last time?
We're gonna divide up with exceeded and we'll do the next roots expected growth. We also had five schools to meet expected growth. Those schools are East Alexander Middle School and any staff with East Alexander. Ellendale Elementary School and all staff here with Ellendale. Stony Point Elementary School and any Stony Point staff. Taylorsville Elementary School and any staff with Taylorsville. And Wittenberg Elementary School and any Wittenberg staff. Now arrange them however you want them, Renee. The next recognition will be made to the Alexander County Schools Finance Department. And sometimes, sometimes, we don't really appreciate our finance department until we need them personally. On the 30th day of the month, we all need you a lot. But the finance department is under the direction of Chief Finance Officer Sharon Mahaffey, and she has a hard-working crew. And it's just unbelievable the amount of questions that they field on a daily basis, the number of deadlines that they must meet. But more than that, they keep our system operating within a budget. That certainly sometimes is a challenge because we all know that public education is expensive to educate children the way that we need to in this time. So, North Carolina State Board of Education and the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction recently made a recognition of achievement. It was presented to the Alexander County Schools for Excellence in Management of the North Carolina State Public School Fund. And Sharon Mahaffey and Liz Bowman are here tonight to accept this award on behalf of the entire department. I would ask you to join me in giving them a big round of applause. Wonderful. And we love our finance department more than just on payday. That's right. Lastly, I'm going to ask Board Member Bridget Ryan to come forward. She's going to award some teacher grants on behalf of the Alexander County Public Education Foundation. Please give her a round of applause.
Good evening, thank you for having me tonight. I don't believe we have any foundation board members here, but I would like to introduce them. They couldn't be here with us tonight. Our vice president is Shannon Presnel, treasurer is Dennis Smart, our secretary is Misty Oxentine. We have Anna Ferguson, Andy Anderson, Phil Eichardt, Dana Binfield, Gordon Knight, Cheryl Moose, Sally Hardus, Chip Sweeney, and Patrick Gilmore. So that's the group, we meet four times a year, and they put some hard work into raising funds for the foundation and so that we can do what we're doing tonight. I would also like to thank our selection committee, that was Dennis Smart, Gordon Knight, and Sally Hardus. And they went through the grants and awarded those that we're gonna present tonight. So I'd like to ask Ms. Sally Hardus to come back. Sally has served on the foundation for the last year, so if you'll help me. We'll start tonight with Mr. Ramey Robinson's grant that he submitted entitled Electric Controls Equipment. He's purchasing additional controls that can be used repeatedly. Mr. Robinson's main goal of this additional equipment is to continue to make our students job-ready on day one. Congratulations, Mr. Robinson. Ms. Heather Houston is bringing science to life at Taylorsville Elementary School. She is purchasing supplies to help Taylorsville's 5th graders improve their knowledge of science, critical thinking skills, problem-solving skills, and to foster a love of learning about science. Congratulations, Ms. Houston. STEM lessons and boxes for 5th grade teachers was submitted by Ms. Melinda Glenn and Ms. Chelsea Harrington. The supplies purchased with this grant will benefit all 5th grade students in our county as teachers work together to develop STEM lessons. They will use EOG data to determine the greatest areas of need. Congratulations, Ms. Glenn, Ms. Harrington, and all 5th grade teachers. Ms. Becky Dupuy is seeking assistance so that the Science Department at Alexander Central High School can attend the National Science Teachers Association Conference in Charlotte. This professional development opportunity will benefit students as teachers will learn new ways to increase rigor in science classrooms by making students use higher-order thinking skills. Congratulations, Ms. Dupuy and the Science Department. Ms. Tracy Chapman's grant is titled Green with Envy. As a media and technology facilitator at Alexander Central, Tracy is seeking assistance with this project so that students and staff will have access to a quality computer that can edit green screen videos and photos for various projects and activities. This technology causes excitement in the classroom and enthusiasm for learning. Congratulations, Shannon. Our last grant is titled The Rejuvenation and Renovation of a Greenhouse and was submitted by Ms. Anita Whitehurst, Mr. Ryan Rao, Mr. Jake Limley, and Mr. Arnold Cogswell Jr. They are requesting funding to give the greenhouse at West Alexander Middle School facelift. This structure has numerous possibilities to enhance STEM education at West benefiting all grade levels. Congratulations. And I would like to say that each grant recipient got $500 for their project. Some of that fulfilled the entire amount they needed, and some they'll have some more monies to go with that. But those are, the grants are worth $500. And I also noticed something about this year's grants. Several of your grants are gonna benefit multiple students, in some cases, your entire schools. So I can't imagine how many children you're gonna touch with what you're doing. So thank you all.
Come on, Sally. Okay, now is our public comment. Okay, thank you, Renee. Board members, you've had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve, as presented.
These are motion and seconds, are in discussion. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any no's, and that carries. Okay, we will start our reports tonight, and it's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Mary Brown from Wittenberg Elementary.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, this is a presentation about Wittenberg Elementary School. It's always great to be a Wittenberg Wildcat. And Wittenberg is a school where we educate the whole child, and that's a little bit about what this presentation is going to focus on. Last year, we had testing, which we always do, and we had a CNA ELA in Math B, and we made expected growth. And that was terrific. In ELA this year, we're doing Gillingham Phonics, all K-2 staff have been trained. And we wanted to thank Dr. Curry for supporting us with that. And then we're using novels to raise the level of rigor. Vocabulary, we're using World of Wise, and we're doing a global read aloud. And math, we are continuing with Engage New York, because we've had a lot of success with Engage New York, a lot of success. Interventions are continuing, we have groups that are small and flexible, they're research-based and recorded daily. We're using iReady, which is new to our school this year, not new to the system. And Interventionist is starting hopefully tomorrow if they are approved by the school board. So we're keeping our distance. PLCs meet once every six days, they meet for 60 minutes, or they try to, it's data-driven. And then one thing we're doing this year is we're doing PLC walkthroughs to see learning-focused schools in action. And we've been doing this last couple of days, we'll take, I think today, we took kindergarten and we looked at essential questions in different classrooms so they can kind of see how the other teachers are using essential questions. And then that gives them information to take back, and they're very positive. We have no, well, there may be opportunities for growth, we focus on what's going well. So we're trying to build our salmon on those and our expertise in that area. PBIS is our school management, and Wittenberg Wildcats care, Sharon, do our best. And we are always checking our head, our heart, our hands, our feet. And we're a model PBI school this year, so we're excited about that. Okay, in professional development, we're doing learning-focused schools. And those are some examples of essential questions at Wittenberg that we've seen in the last couple of weeks. And we're looking at the vocabulary, where they're placed and knowing, and these are the things the different grade levels are seeing as they walk throughout the school. And we go back and we talk about what we see and what we could use in our classrooms. One of the other areas that we're focusing on in terms of professional development is mental health. We're seeing a lot of issues with mental health with a lot of our students, and it's something we're really trying to get a handle on, and it's a struggle. So we're participating in resilience training, we're doing something called Sanford Harmony, and that's a social-emotional learning program. And we had a training for trauma-informed classrooms. So we're not there yet, but we are working and we're trying to, we're trying to be as supportive as we can as much as we can for our kids, because it seems like it's becoming more of an issue as we go by. Okay, and then we have some things that we're doing in our education, but they're not necessarily measured by tests. So, we're welcoming our new friends. We have a DED classroom at Wittenberg this year, and they have been such a blessing. And I don't have the children, but I have, we do a pumpkin contest, and two of the students participate in the pumpkin contest. And a little boy who's in 5th grade actually did the Panthers, and he won for 5th grade. And that was just like a moment. It was just one of those moments you're close to an educator, and it was really neat, but they all got to participate. And that was, it's neat. But the other thing I want to say is that the students at Wittenberg have been very welcoming. We've asked them to play, and they've tried to really integrate them in. And it's not, I know it's not gonna be perfect, but we've had a really, really good team. So I'm very pleased about that. We have Grandparents' Day, some people may or may not have attended that, or that are in this room. We have, and we had, and one of the things we did this year was we gave an opportunity for parents to, grandparents to read with their children, and they really enjoyed that. And we divided up over a couple of days, but we really tried to integrate that reading aspect. We had a science festival last year, and that was neat, and our families could come in. What was neat about that science festival is that our students ran to different stations. So not only were they learning about science, they were teaching other kids about science. And that's how you remember, it's when you teach. And then we have a lot of fun at Halloween. So we had, and it's a family time, and this is a Wittenberg family time. All of the grade levels dress up, or hallways dress up as a theme. And those are common apps, if you notice. In one of the pictures, in the other is the office staff. And I know you don't know who the lady in the pointy hat is.
No, I really didn't.
And so we have, we started a few years ago, but we have this pumpkin contest, and people go just all out. And that, those are what those two earlier pumpkins were. But we try to publicize it as a time for parents and children to work together and do something creative and not in front of a screen. We had 57 entries this year, and we know a lot of them are Pinterest to death, but I don't care. There were, you know, it's kids and parents working together, and they were really, they're just really, really cute. And the kids get super excited about it, and so those are some of the highlights. I think the ice cream cone one, and that little cabin one. One little boy wanted to take home the little turtles, and that was one of our EC kids made the little turtles, too. So that was, it's just, it's just a neat thing. And we have Veterans' Day celebration, and that's always neat, it's always a tear-jerker, and it's very special to the Wittenberg family. We, last year, we had Lego Club, and it was just for girls. We've expanded that, and now we're adding boys, and we're having, we're having to take it over the entire year. Last year, it was just one semester, now it's gonna be two semesters so that we can include everybody. So that's been a lot of fun. We had a Boys' Book Club, and it was just for boys to encourage boys reading, and that was Mr. Smith. One of our teachers got that grant last year. We have the WOW Awards, and the WOW Awards we do every nine weeks. And it's an opportunity to recognize children who may not be recognized on honor or who may not get every award, but they're just good, all-around kids that work hard and try. But the interesting thing about it is most of the reasons those kids get nominated by their teachers are because they're kind. And one little boy one year said, "Ms. Brown, I'll tell you something." I said, "What?" He's like, "I noticed something about all those WOW Award winners today." I said, "Well, what's that?" He said, "They're just really nice to other kids." So it's a learning experience, even if they're not getting chosen for a while. And it gets a little competitive, it's interesting. And then we have STEM in real life, and what we do is when we have Career Day, we try to focus it on STEM and so the kids can see exactly where these skills will take them, the kind of careers they can have. There's a big farm equipment, and I think there's a race car in there, too. Then every Christmas, we make cookies. And we, you've probably seen some of this before, but we've, they get math, but they get some experiences that they otherwise might not have. But just personally for me, that was always one of my favorite holiday memories, was making cookies with my mom and my siblings. And I know a lot of these kids don't ever have that opportunity, so we try to give them this opportunity. It's two days, and it's a strong two days, but it's an interesting two days. But they'll come back and they'll say, "You know what, that was my favorite memory of school." And even some of the parents have said that. So, and they really get to see, so a lot of kids, they don't know that it doesn't come from Walmart in a bag or a box. And then we have a summer reading program, and we celebrate our summer readers, and they get to go get pizza, and they get a really nice ride. All right, we missed one slide, but there is one slide. We don't have the most canned drive of everybody, a canned food drive, we don't get the most cans, but we send home backpacks with our kids that are totally Wittenberg-supplied. So, okay, oh, there I go. Thanks for trying to help. But, and so we have kids that, from a personal level, bring cans, and it goes to kids in our families, entire families in our, in our school system. And we have several churches to support that, and I could not be more proud of that program. And then, when we get to the end...
Well, I have to ask about the Hands-on Science, because the one that's uploaded, I don't know.
I don't know where that picture went, but...
But it's Sonya Tig, and it looks like she has some sort of body part, what are they doing?
Somebody sent in pieces of a cow, like the heart and the lungs, and the trachea, and all that stuff. So you can see it, I don't know why it's not coming up on there.
But we can see it on our screen.
I can see it, yes.
So, it's, it was really the pieces of a cow. So they got to touch the cow heart and the cow lung and the trachea, and I think maybe a... a brain. No, the brain wasn't there. But it was, now they know where hamburger comes from. And it was interesting, because it was interesting for me, because I've never seen the pieces of a cow like that, so I'm like, oh, hey.
Vegetarians do we now have at Wittenberg.
So, there you go. So, and then finally, thank you, and it is great, as always, to be a Wittenberg Wildcat.
Good. Board members, do you have any questions?
I thought it was a great presentation.
Yeah.
Really?
Yes.
Enjoyed it.
Can I just brag on Ms. Hardest for just a minute? She has volunteered at our school, and she's made cookies, and she has just been such, not only a board member, but a great parent, so thank you very much for allowing me to go through her.
I love it.
Oh, I still have a grandchild.
You still have one.
Okay, now's our superintendent report. I'll ask Dr. Jennifer Hefner to present that.
All right, this one's a short one tonight. The North Carolina School Board Association's Annual Conference for Board Member Development is next Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday in Greensboro. Chairman Bowman, Deborah Watts, and I are looking forward to learning opportunities that this conference will provide this year. I want to really hone in on the Sports Hall of Fame. Those tickets are being sold for $20 each. This event is scheduled for Monday, November 19th, beginning at 6:00 at the Alexander Central Auditorium. Some people have questioned the reason for the change in venue, and I just want to reiterate that the change in location was made to enable the Education Foundation to raise even more money for the teacher grants, like those that were awarded tonight, and to increase the scholarship money available to our students. The event is certainly a way to honor our athletic standouts, but it's also a fundraiser. And I just want to mention that this year, the Education's Foundation, their goal is to exceed the expenses of the event in order to offer the grants and scholarships. So I wanted to take this opportunity to mention that. The Foundation will host a reception on the evening of the 19th that will include heavy hors d'oeuvres and a time for socializing. Tickets can be purchased at the Board of Education, People's Drug, Office Practice of Pharmacy, and Brushy Mountain Golf Course. Or you may also call to reserve tickets by will call through the ACHS Auditorium, and that phone number is 828-632-1366. I want to remind everyone that Monday, November 12th, is a holiday for students and staff in honor of Veterans' Day. Several of our schools have some special activities planned to recognize veterans from the county this week, and I just want to encourage everyone to make a special effort on Monday of next week or at any point, just to thank a veteran. We have many freedoms in this country because of what our servicemen and women do, and it is certainly a sacrifice that they make. And please remember the veterans as we recognize Veterans' Day on Sunday, the 11th. But again, that Monday is a holiday for students and staff. And then the, one of the last things that I'll mention, the Board of Education plans to visit West Alexander Middle School on Friday. That's November night, beginning at 11:30 for lunch and a tour of that facility. I hope all of you are making plans to attend. And one thing that I want to mention while I still have the microphone, each of you has a postcard up here with a gorgeous scene. It looks like it was taken from this time of year, not this year, but it was taken in a previous year. And then on the back, it just has some information about our school system. This is one of the things that has been created through the efforts of Renee Mead and the HR department. Along with, you will see two new beautiful banners that we are taking to job fairs and different events. One has Nikki McLean on it, the other Tina Walker. They are just beautiful in and of themselves. But if you look at the top of the one where Nikki is photographed, you will see a scan code. And we're really trying to promote technology at these job fairs, and if a person has a scan reader on their smartphone, you go up and you read that code, and it takes you to our website. And so they can learn more about the school system, and we hope we become interested in being a part of the family here in this school system. So we certainly thank Renee and the HR department, and keep sending us good staff members to Alexander County. Board members, do you have any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move along to unfinished business, and I'll call Ms. Sherri McCaffey up for policy revisions.
Actually, Ms. McCaffey has gone over to the commissioners' meeting.
Okay.
And Dr. Alicia Clower is going to be subbing for Ms. McCaffey.
Good evening, everyone. All right, so we're looking at two policies for the second reading tonight, and they are the prohibition against discrimination, harassment, and bullying, and discrimination, harassment, and bullying complaint procedure. These policy revisions were shared with principals and directors, and there were no questions or comments, and so I ask for approval of these policies on the second reading.
Okay, board members, I need a motion to approve these on the second reading.
Move to approve on the second reading.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any no's. Thank you, that carries. Alicia, if you want to continue with new business?
Okay, I have two, a couple more things for policies. There's four policies that are presented for the first reading tonight, and we plan to request input and bring them back next month. And those policies are school safety, board member elections, board member conflict of interest, and school volunteers. And then there is one new policy for presentation tonight. And we will ask for input from administrators and bring it back for second reading next month, and that is the opioid, 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 I can't even say it.
Antagonist policy.
Somebody say opioid.
Opioid.
I was saying right. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll call Dr. Betsy Curry up for the Alexander County School Improvement Plans.
Good evening. If you remember, about two months ago, we shared the first draft of the Comprehensive Needs Assessments and the School Improvement Plans with you. We had just a bit of a delay on a couple of them, so we brought them to you for your review and approval with the revisions for this evening, and that one does require a vote.
Board members, do I get a motion to approve the plans as presented?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any no's? Thank you, there.
We spoke last month about the timeline for Head Night and their NC Star Plan, and you will see in your board docs that there is a copy of the four documents that inform that NC Star Plan. What I'm giving you right now is it's an electronic database, and I went through that for a little bit with Charles Draper today. And what they've done is they've uploaded most of the information from their already-created school improvement plan, Comprehensive Needs Assessment, into this format. So you will not see a lot of changes in NC Star, but I have given you the website for it, and I've also given you the guest password, so that you can go in and see what's going on. This handout right here, this was probably the best way to show to you what was going on, because they'll be measuring progress in indicators. So as they enter things into this, the bars will move across, and they get to focus on whichever indicators they want to for this year. So the most important thing that we ask you to do is to provide feedback to Mr. Draper or to myself or to both of us, if you have any suggestions from the Comprehensive Needs Assessment things that they might want to consider doing. Mr. Draper and Mr. Vabry shared their Comprehensive Needs Assessment and the NC Star with their parents and the community this evening. They met there at 5:30, and then he made it back in case there are any questions I couldn't answer, to begin to get some feedback from them. If you remember, we're going to share that with you in about two weeks, the finalized version of it, and then we're going to vote on it to accept it and submit it to the state in December, at the December meeting. We were granted the extension to have it uploaded into NC Star. Do you have any questions about that?
Just so I'm clear, Dr. Curry, I know that we will approve that in December. Then it goes to the State Board for their input. If there are revisions to be made, then it's sent back to us. Those revisions are made. Does this board have to then approve it again?
No, they will not, because the revisions are suggestions.
Okay.
They're not mandates. But if you see, there's the, I included this, and I'll put this into board docs also, but this is the timeline, and you notice I've got the little checkboxes as far as we complete things.
Okay.
It's really, it's a lot of compliance, because it is amazing, the work that's going on already. I mean, it's just, just, it's like a different place. And it just so happened that I was there with the leader and me coach on the same day. We came out of the classroom saying the same thing, and Ms. Anderson, who you'll get to meet a little bit later on, also went with me for a visit, and she said, "I would never know that this was a love-performing school upon visiting." And you really can. It's a tight ship right now. I'm looking forward to good things coming out of that school right now, and I think they're feeling really good about what they're doing, which is the important thing to me. Any other questions for? I do want to congratulate Mr. Draper and Mr. Vabry. They've just done an outstanding job. I know a lot of hours and their staff too have gone into really focusing and honing in on what they need to do, and just being really smart about their work, so that everybody's not having to work harder and more hours, but just being hyper-focused. And I think that's going to be the key to their success, is that they are hyper-focused on the important things. Any questions? If you have any feedback, if you will just make sure, and I'll follow up with an email that you get to Mr. Draper and myself by the middle of the month. Thank you.
Does this require...
This does not require a vote till next month.
Nothing until December.
This is just for you to have to preview.
Okay, next is Ms. Macy Jones, and she'll be presenting the duration grant for the extension of Head Start Hours.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I want to say thank you to Sally for all of her, her hard work and for being part of the Head Start Policy Council for the last two or three years, maybe, three years. And she's been present at just about every meeting. I don't think, she's maybe missed but one or two meetings, so thank you so much, Sally, for everything. I want to miss you.
Most welcome. It was my pleasure.
So this evening, I'm here to ask for permission to submit a grant to increase the hours of service for 45 of our Head Start children. In your packet, you have the supplemental funds request from the Department of Health and Human Services, and then you have a summary of some of the things that I would like to ask for in this grant. This may be the only opportunity we have for a while to try to ask for salary increases for some of our people. We are extending the day for children until 2:45. Right now, most of our classrooms dismiss at 1:00. We do have a classroom at Stony Point that has, I believe it's 10 children, that stay until 2:30. And then we have a classroom at Wittenberg, where we do have a few children that stay until 2:30. But this additional monies would allow 45 of our children to stay until 2:30. The management team is working on a plan on how we're going to do that. We are doing a survey for interest at the Stony Point and the Wittenberg sites, because that's where our Head Start classrooms are located, to see who would be interested in the service, but we can extend it for 45 children. The other thing that I would like to ask for in this duration grant is for a, I think it's, is to extend our services to include wraparound services. We have grandparents and parents who've expressed an interest in before-school care and after-school care, to allow them to go to school and to allow them to work as well. Right now, the current before-and-after-school care program is not licensed to serve our preschool children, and the difference is, there's a big difference between serving preschool children and school-aged children. So our program would just serve our preschool children.
Macy, one question that I had about that wraparound program, if awarded, would you be using current staff, or would you have to hire additional staff for that?
We would have to hire some additional staff and flex hours. The management team has been looking at the current staff that we have in place and how we could make sure that we have our buses covered in the morning and in the afternoon. But we'll still have to have people come in on staggered schedules, and we don't have enough people in place right now to do that, so we would have to have some help with that. The other thing that I'm interested in asking for is a preschool behavioral interventionist or therapist. We talked a little bit about the great needs this morning in our leadership team meeting, and then you heard Mary Brown talk about it at the needs at Wittenberg, and then Sharmin is here, she can tell you about Bethlehem, and Janelle is here, she can tell you about Taylorsville, and some of the children with the greatest needs that are in kindergarten are children that we had in Head Start. And there is, every year, the needs seem to become more and more severe. And Sally has heard the conversations that we've had in policy council, and my teachers, we just don't have the skills that we need to work with some of these children that are experiencing the ACEs, the Adverse Childhood Experiences, and are just in traumatic situations. So we need somebody that is skilled and can help us with children, because believe it or not, sometimes it takes two people to manage one. Look at all the heads nodding. Three. One, even one preschool child, and then that leaves the other 15, or 12, or 18 unattended. And sometimes it's a safety issue. So we need some help with somebody that can help us provide some intervention and therapy. And then the last thing, startup funds are, I believe, are available in this duration money, and so I will ask for those buses again. We were not funded in the last round of monies, because the hurricanes came through, and the money was diverted to rebuild other sites that were destroyed by the hurricanes. So I do need permission to move forward with asking. And if there's anything ever that you think that we need that I'm not, that I'm not seeing or that I don't know or hear about, just let me know, and I definitely will address it.
Okay. Board members, is there a motion and a second to approve the duration grant?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any no's? Thank you, that carries.
Thank you.
Okay, in accordance to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, the board will now enter to closed session for the purpose of discussing personnel. Do I have a motion and a second?
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any no's? Okay. Thanks, everyone, for coming and supporting us.
Thank you. Thank you.